All right, I will call to order a meeting of the La Grande City Council for December 2nd, 2020, noting that all councilors are participating electronically by remote session. And that the session is being broadcast on Eastern Oregon Live TV through their Facebook connection. Could I have a roll call, please?
Steve Clemmons.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
Karine Dudo.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Justin Rock. Justin Rock.
Here.
Okay, he's logged in. All right then. We have an agenda. It doesn't look like there's any significant changes to it. We have a consent agenda with one item on it, and that is approval of the regular session minutes from November 4th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion for that action.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye when your name is called for the roll call vote.
Steve Clemmons.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
Karine Dudo.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Robert, any public comments received before deadline last night at 5:00?
We did not. Thank you, Mayor.
All righty. Okay, let me just get my notes quickly organized here. We have a public hearing, which is a second reading of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Adopt Housing Needs Analysis. I will open the public hearing and say that the rules of order were read in their entirety during the November 4th meeting and ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have any additional items to add. It is the second reading of the Housing Needs Analysis. And following your decision, this would then go before the Union County Planning Department or Planning Commission for Recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who will then essentially repeat your process, hold the first and second reading of a co-adopting ordinance, so that this Housing Needs Analysis and the Comp Plan Amendment can apply in the urban growth boundary. Do you have any questions?
So Mike, once it goes to the county commissioners, what are we looking like, looking at another two or three months before it's finalized?
Yeah, so I'm, I don't know how the, the meetings or the deadlines for getting on their agenda is going to stack up, but I'm anticipating a January meeting with the Union County Planning Commission. Hopefully that'll put me in line with a February and March public hearing for the Board of Commissioners. But if the deadlines just don't line up very well with getting on their agenda, it might push me back a month, but yeah, we're about three months, four months at the most.
Right, thank you. Any other questions for Mike?
Yeah, I have one. I was just wondering if you have heard anymore either from the state or citizens about the duplex issue and the associated parking conditions?
I have not, but we can, that will be on the Planning Commission's agenda next Tuesday. So it's a completely separate issue to this. So if you'd like, we could maybe discuss that a little bit during a staff or commission or councilor conference.
I have had a citizen talk to me about that, and she had some concerns about more dense housing near her house.
Okay, well, let's, let's save that and we could chat about that during the staff comments at the end. That'd probably be the more appropriate time and, and I can give you some clarification on that, just so you know how to respond to folks or at least what, what's going on with that.
I, I had one comment made to me from somebody who's saying, if you change the, the low, yeah, the low-density area and add duplexes to that, how will that affect the property tax? Not the taxes, but the valuation of their property?
Yeah, I don't know if I can respond to that, but we'll, yeah, we'll add that to the comments too later.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions for Mike? Right, Robert, any public testimony related to this matter?
No, Mayor, you have everything in your packet.
All righty. Council discussion. Sounds like people have had contact with a few people, with citizens about this issue. I know there's some parallel things going on with the state's change in allowing duplexes in single-family residences, which people might have some concern about, but is not part of this element. If no comment discussions, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that the proposed ordinance adopting the 2019 Housing Needs Analysis and amending and replacing the Goal 10 chapter of the City of La Grande Comprehensive Plan be read for the second time by title only, put to a vote, and adopted.
I second.
All right, any additional conversation? Then could I have a reading of the proposed ordinance by title only for the second time?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, amending the statewide Goal Chapters 10 of the City of La Grande Comprehensive Plan, recodifying the comprehensive plan, repealing ordinance number 3208, Series 2013, and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and declaring an effective date.
Steve, you're muted.
Okay, sorry, thank you. So we've had a reading by, of the title, and I will ask for roll call vote.
Steve Clemmons.
Yes.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
Karine Dudo.
Yes.
Nicole Howard.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
Justin Rock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on then, we have no unfinished business. We have one item of new business, and that is to consider approval of a COVID-19 Business Assistance Program. The council discussed this program in a work session a week and a half ago, maybe two, I believe, and it's now time for us to have some public conversation about it and and get this thing moving forward. So, Robert, it's up to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor mentioned, on the 16th of November, the council did meet in a work session to discuss potential support to La Grande businesses during the COVID-19 pandemic. And during the work session, we talked about essentially three programs. One's an existing program that we have, which is the Emergency Loan Program, and expanding that and adding some additional funding from this year's adopted budget. And essentially what that would look like is we would offer loans of up to $10,000, and the applicant could either elect for the terms under our current emergency loan program, which is a four-year term at 1% interest. And I think that's the way that is structured is first six months, there's no payments, and then the next six months, it's interest only, and then the principal and interest starts after that. Or this new program, which would really be intended to be more of kind of some gap funding for them to get them through winter a little bit, and that would be an 18-month zero-interest loan. And I think the way that we talked is they wouldn't have to make any payments for the first six months, and then they'd have 12 months after that to, to pay that back. And whatever suited the individual business need better, that would really be their call as to what they wanted to do. And what I would envision is we would take the $200,000 of the funding that we have and dedicate it to that program. And then the next program would be a, page turns to it, allocate $10,000 to help fund the purchase of accounting software for businesses that would be done in conjunction with training. We specifically engaged tech about the ability to help people with the programs such as QuickBooks and how to use it. We've identified through the conversations with businesses, oftentimes it's very difficult for them to provide the required financial reports and information when they're applying for grants and loans. And we see that as a need, and this would be a way that we could allocate up to $500 per individual so that they could purchase the accounting software. They would have that when they were doing their training. That doesn't necessarily have to be done exclusively with tech, but that was something that we engaged Mary Ann about in advance of the work session that we had to confirm that they would be able to assist with that. And then the final program is, and the $10,000 would be a grant, so it would be $500 just to reimburse or pay for the software. They wouldn't have to pay that back. The Emergency Loan Program, the $10,000, up to $10,000, those would have to be paid back. And the last one is a, is a smaller grant program, up to $2,500, that would allow businesses to do things to help them to deal with the pandemic. That could be Plexiglas dividers. It could be the software and hardware they need to be able to do online sales, that sort of thing. And both the, the training and software grant and this grant that I've just described would be on a first-come, first-served basis. And essentially, we would be allocating the $250,000 that we have in the business relief budget line to provide an expanded loan program with a, with a different option. And these smaller grants to address some training and software needs or some actual improvements that might need to be done, just to try to provide an added level of help. I do know also that the county has accepted $750,000 or $700,000 of state cares dollars, and they're going to be putting out a program next week for that. So another opportunity for businesses in the community to get some, get some help with what they're doing with that present. Happy to answer whatever questions you have. And Mayor, I think you were going to mention the letter that was received today.
Yes, council received a letter. I think most of you may have seen it, from Sandy Sorrels, who owns and operates Ten Depot Restaurant. Just of the letter is about preparation of a Thanksgiving dinner and a meal that they, that the restaurant was able to provide and, and to sell. It also implies that there's, that, that small businesses, and I would say in particular restaurants, are having a hard time of it. So I think this, this program that we're offering is timely. When we get to the point for council discussion, I have something I might want to, I'm going to throw out there and see how it, how it dances, but any other public comment, Robert, from, from on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. I think the, I think the program overall is, is really good. I wish we had more, more money to put to it, and I wish I knew more about how the county was going to distribute its $700,000, whether it's going to be grants or, or loans or whatnot. I do have, I have one item that, that I would like us to consider. And that is that, under that third element of the $20,000, I'm, I'm wondering two things. Do we want to lower the maximum amount? Assuming everybody took the maximum of $2,500, that would only be eight businesses that we could provide for, because we only have $20,000. The other thing in, in the context of that, while we're saying infrastructure things like equipment or software improvements, I wonder if we want to make that even more flexible for people to be able to come in and get, for instance, had an email from, a separate email from Sandy Sorrels today that said, this is the time when restaurants have to pay their, what did she call it? Their health license? And that's a $500 fee. You know, wonder if, you know, if we've got $20,000, could we make it more flexible so a business could come in and say, look, I, I could really use a few hundred bucks to pay this right now? And, and we would give that to them. In this case, you know, a business could come in and say, I, I got a bill at the end of the year. I'm really cash strapped. I need 500 bucks. Could I get 500 bucks? Could we do that? So two things I'm asking for on that last part. Lower the maximum amount and then add some flexibility to that, that particular program. And I see Karine has her hand up.
I was thinking along the same lines of helping to pay, you know, I don't think we should pay for any old bill, but paying for the things that are related to businesses that might be sort of considered a tax or a fee or something like that. We can't really waive those, but maybe if we could help assist with paying for them, that might, that might ease some of the burden too, but I was thinking along the lines as well.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
I agree. That's exactly what I had written down too. I was wondering if we couldn't add something like that to that section of the proposal. Something lowering, I mess the maximum is 2,500. Doesn't mean they have to take out 2,500 though.
Right.
So I, I think they should be able to use it for something like that, the Health Department license.
Are there any limitations that we're working within? Is there anything we can't use it for? And also Christine's tried to chime in a minute ago, and I'm curious what she was going to say there.
Okay.
Thanks, Nicole. I do have some additional information about the county's program. So they are going to make a decision on Monday how they're distributing that money. They will be grants, and it will be in a tiered system. So businesses that were hit twice by executive orders will have priority and will have an opportunity to get additional funding. And then it goes down depending on what type of business you are. I believe Donna said they're considering three tiers. The turnaround time on that money is very fast. So those applications open on Tuesday, and they'll have a week to apply. It's not like the grants that went out through Business Oregon last, last week. They will take applications for a week and oh, there was something else. Oh, sorry. Applications for a week, the tiers. Oh, they're going to be much simpler applications. So they're basically just going to be certifying a certain set of, of data points and information. So much, much easier than previous applications.
Before we go to Karine, I do want to mention that that was one of the things that Sandy mentioned in her letter that we received was That we received was sure there was that it there was a grant opportunity or money last week, but they only had one day. And small businesses don't have the resources to be able to fulfill that kind of of a deadline. So.
Yeah.
I I'm hoping the county will have some type of assistance to complete the applications.
Going through the SBDC.
Okay.
And then I did also want to let you know that we still have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, we don't. Any OED has about a hundred and fifty thousand left in their round four money from Business Oregon. They have to get that money out by December tenth, or it goes back to the state. So we're doing Facebook posts, a press release, trying to get that information out. And then the other thing is we still have block grant money left through that city sponsored block grant. I don't know the amount on that right now, but there is some money left in that fund as well.
Corinne.
For grants.
So my question is, will city of LeGrand businesses be eligible for the county funds?
Yes. Yeah.
So I'm just trying to get it, you know, go back to to it sounds like Corinne and. And Mary Ann and I are kind of on the same page. Gary, Nicole, Justin. Your thoughts on that third item and whether. Should we make it more flexible? Should we change the maximum? Those are the two things that we we kind of kicked around out there.
I say that we wait and see what comes through, and if we need to adjust and adjust it at that time. Because we might not get that many applications. So if you you change the money now that someone actually needs and you limited them, then. Like I said, if we don't have that many applications, why are we going to cut the price down?
Good point. Nicole?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think we it's a it's a little bit unclear what the needs are as far from where I stand. You know, I hear really different things. And I know the first round went, I think the first round went pretty quickly and then. Maybe not as fat. I I just think it's hard to know. What people are going to go for, so I would leave it as loose as possible and cinch it up later if we need to.
If I could, if I could share a couple, first of all, there were a couple of questions that came up during the conversation. No, there's not a limit or restriction on what we would. The strings that we would put with these dollars, because these are general fund dollars. The council has the most flexibility with these funds. I think that. The concept and intent. Is to have it be COVID related. And if you say that we have twenty thousand dollars on a first come, first served basis that can be used for any business purpose. At all. I think that's you're going to, you know, it's essentially the first few people in the door. Are going to ask for it. They're going to get it. It's going to be gone. If if the council's intent is to do things that are specific to trying to help businesses that are that are impacted by COVID. To be able to do things to help them through. Then. I think this small amount to do those little things that have to be done makes sense. I I I don't know that this would be something that we would want to use to let people pay utility bills and that sort of thing. I, you know, it's certainly up to the council on how how you want to allocate those. But if we if we say it's it can be any business expense that you have currently. It could be a business that's not impacted at all by COVID that walks in and sees an opportunity to get, you know, however many dollars of of free money. Which I what I don't think is is the intent.
Nicole?
Well, I just, I'm really in the dark in terms of need. So Robert knows that I reached out to him at one point. I asked a few downtown business owners, what do you need? And they said, oh, you know, help shoveling the sidewalks in winter, especially during the holiday shopping season. But it turns out that's a little bit more complicated than you might think, so that wasn't really a starter. But Christine probably knows better than a lot of us, like I I don't know. What the express need is at this point. It's really hard to take that temperature as a private citizen, especially during COVID. When I barely leave my house, like I don't, Christine, do you know?
Yeah.
Need to get to tomorrow and next month, and what do those expenses look like?
So our restaurants in particular are really struggling. Those are the businesses that I'm hearing from. I left a message with Corinne today about a business she had referred to me in the spring. And when I talked to them in April, they were they were good. And he thought that they had had enough savings that they were going to be able to hold on. I talked to that same business yesterday and he said it's so much worse than he ever could have imagined. That it's it's just really bad. So the businesses that are struggling are really struggling. And we have businesses that hadn't really, that were hanging on and doing okay. And that last two weeks and then the freeze has really, really hit. Hit the restaurant industry in particular very, very hard. But also our businesses like our gyms, our dance studios, anything like that that had to absolutely close. Those businesses are in dire straits right now.
So with this third item, of course, that's really not a lot of money. But hearing this from Christine, would we want to structure it or limit it in some way to focus on? Those business sectors that seem to be having the most trouble right now.
Well, that's another option that I was thinking about. And I mean, we 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 can almost do that. As as Christine has said, restaurants, businesses that have been forced to close completely. And have voluntarily done so. That that. You know, it could, the the county is sort of doing that with their tier system. And I'm I'm guessing then that that the county has a list of businesses that they're going to place into tiers. And maybe we can use that for businesses within the city of LeGrand and say, okay. Without making this thing more too complicated, it seems like there's certain businesses that should have some priority. And that there are other businesses that may not. And I'm I'm sensitive to what Robert was saying about, you know, you make this grant wide open and you know. And it's first come, first served. We could get people coming in and asking for a thousand dollars to. Help pay for property taxes or or something, and that's not really the intent. We're trying to. Help businesses that have been negatively impacted by COVID. And and in trying, giving them something so that so that they can, they can make it through a little bit longer. So Gary's idea is worth considering. I don't know how we structure that or how we build that into the that third item. So I'm open to to hear from either Robert or Christine. I see Nicole's got her hand up.
I don't have my hand up. Sorry, that was gesticulating.
Okay, go ahead, Corinne.
I I think that having a tiered system makes a lot of sense, and I think we can pull it right off of Governor Brown's. Restrictions, you know, what businesses were the most restricted and put them at the top tier. And maybe we could look at those first. And then if there's money left after a given period of time, whatever, two, three, four weeks. Then we can look at other businesses that were not completely shut down. But had a a significant impact on their business. So I think that's pretty easy to find from from the governor's mandates.
Okay, Gary, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I was thinking that if we were to go that route, there's probably a sufficient number of businesses that. We may want to look at that amount. As you were talking about to begin the discussion, you know, twenty five hundred dollars out of twenty thousand. If everybody gets that much, that's not going to go a whole long ways. And it sounds like the businesses we're talking about potentially targeting would certainly outnumber. The number of slots available at that amount.
This is a lot going on here, I think. I like the idea of a tiered system. It 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 inclines me to go back to a little more flexibility with the money. Because then we'd have some some targeting as long as they're, because we're sort of building in the COVID impact. Based on the tier system. I think Gary's got a good point. Twenty thousand is not a lot if we start, you know, identifying those businesses that have been most impacted. And and if they came in for the full amount.
On the other hand, if you limit it too much, how helpful is that going to be?
Then it becomes useless. Right, right.
Why don't, why don't we leave it at the twenty five hundred? And maybe a business might apply for twenty five hundred and me we might grant a thousand of it. And say, maybe we'll look at the other fifteen hundred in a month. And see what else comes in, and we could do it stepwise.
That seems like a lot of management, though. I worry a little bit about strapping staff with that level of. Kind of monitoring. It's a good idea, but I think it might be hard in practice.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things that we we looked very closely at when we were initially doing this was. The concept of. Resource allocation. Christine and I talked about this a little bit. We only have so much staff capacity to do things. And one of the things that that we talked about was, we know that people need to buy. A. Device with a cube so that they can. Do online sales potentially. And they may not be able to buy an iPad because they don't have the, you know, the the thousand bucks or whatever to do it. Or the software to to add to their system. And so this this third item was really intended for reimbursing someone. Or something that they have to spend to help their business survive COVID and be better prepared going forward. Not just a. Here's some money to to cover whatever you need. So I think that for this one. I would expect of the three, this is the one that's going to get the most interest because it's free money, because it's a grant. And. We've kind of have it structured as a first come, first serve. And maybe the maybe what we do is we take away the first come, first served element. And we prioritize it first to. Directly related to. Improvements or purchases that are tied towards. COVID safety and business survivability, for lack of a better term. And so when we get in, you know, twenty businesses asking for five hundred, twenty five hundred, whatever it is. We can take a look at those those hard expenses and say. Yeah, these these do make sense from a COVID standpoint, but we don't turn it into an overly complex. Situation, and we also don't turn it into a free for all. And so we can structure it to where. Essentially, it is, you know, first priority for funding is is a direct COVID related thing, kind of like we talked about here on the on the in the. Form. And then the second piece is kind of the negatively impact. And, you know. We can use a little bit of discretion and judgment as we're doing this. I I have a feel and a flavor for what the council is thinking. You know, by by putting a maximum cap, and then we can see what we get in. And by taking the first come, first served sort of thing off, we can open it up for for a window of time. And go from there and maybe what we do. From a timing on this one, I don't know if we want to to wait a couple of weeks to make the award to see what happens with the county money or not. But I I I do think that, you know, somehow tying this back to a little bit more specific to the COVID thing. I I I would be more comfortable with that. Than just saying, you know, we can use it for for a lot of things. The tiered piece, I think, makes great sense for. Prioritizing the emergency loan dollars that come through the door. We kind of had said that when we first launched that program. That if we found ourselves in a situation where we had more demand than dollars. That we would do it in that fashion. And I think we continue with that concept. For this next iteration of those those grants and what I would kind of envision would be. Adversely impacted in a significant way from COVID first. If you if you receive funding from us already under that program. You would kind of go to the back of the line from others that haven't received assistance from us yet, probably. But really kind of use that most impacted first, and I think the, you know, looking at the kind of the matrix on the impacts that are being placed on businesses. While we're in this extreme category makes sense. So I think we can use those principles for the loan program. I don't think that we need to use them for the software accounting thing. And but I think I think the messaging about. Helping those who are impacted the worst first makes sense, and we can put together some stuff within the within that framework for you.
And I, yeah, I think my my real my real concern is. And the loan program is 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 kind of addresses this is that. We're at a point where if somebody, if somebody's been operating already for the last six months. They've they've put in whatever they needed to for for COVID protection. You know, they they they've taken care of that piece of it. What we're getting to now is it's. A few hundred bucks here, a few hundred bucks there are what they need to survive, to stay open. And I think while we had some interest in the loans. Earlier on, I have heard anecdotally that that people don't even want to take a loan now. Because it it's, you know, they're even at one percent, which is not a lot of interest on an annual basis if you take the full ten thousand. It's it's sort of this dissuading thing. They don't want to take the loan because they're already tapped out. I'm really concerned, really, really concerned that we got businesses on the edge where even a few hundred bucks. Is going to help them make it through one more month. And it's in it's that they've been affected by COVID, but it's also. You know, they've put out what they've needed to put out to be COVID ready or be COVID accessible. And I'm I, you know, it's it'll be interesting to see what what twenty thousand dollars does and what people come in and request to do with it. I think Robert's got a good point. I think we should go ahead with the with the with the loan program just as soon as possible. But we might want to step back and just wait until we see what the county has to has put together and how they're going to address the businesses. Throughout the county, and we'll know that by what, Monday or Tuesday? So maybe. So maybe there's an opportunity to hold back. So Christine, go.
Yeah, so a couple of things. The county will vote on Monday, so we'll know what their program is on Monday. And then again, we do have those other two grant funds that are still out there. And so I I know that those applications are very cumbersome, but. You know, we're here to help people get through that. I've been working with people all this week, trying to help them get their applications filled out. And I know that there's at least a hundred and fifty thousand. As I said, I just don't know how much is left in that block grant funding. So. That that will help us meet some immediate need with funding that is available as grant funding.
Okay, so I'm trying to get a sense of 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 where we are and how we, what we need to do to move forward. I think everybody's made some really good points. I think we as a city are are able to bring to bear. You know, a lot of money here, two hundred fifty thousand total, I think, for for business support. I don't think that that's that's a bad sum with whatever the seven hundred thousand the county has. You know, businesses can apply for both of these things if they need to. So I I guess my sense, my my question for you is, do we? do we move forward with the program as it is, perhaps with the recommendations that, that Robert had in terms of tiering? Um, the, I think, I think Robert, you said developing a tier for that first, for the loan system, and then leaving the other two intact the way they are.
Well, um, I appreciate, and I very much appreciate the discussion. And just to clarify, you know, with this two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that brings the counties, I'm sorry, the cities' business assistance up well over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Because we've already put out a hundred and eighty plus thousand dollars in emergency loans. And, you know, that's a, that's a pretty substantial investment uh, in our, in our businesses. And, and it's, and I know that it's much needed and I know that it's also much appreciated. Uh, in terms of figuring out the nuts and bolts of what to do with this twenty thousand dollars, uh, I think Nicole said it very well when she said Christine probably has the best feel for what people need. And based on the conversation that, that the council has just had, what I would say is if you, if you look at what we're proposing here, it is we'll put together nuts and bolts of an execution program based on the guidance that we've got. And we'll figure out what makes sense to do with this twenty thousand dollars. And, uh, we'll keep you informed of what, what that looks like. Alternatively, yeah, if we want to wait and see what happens with the county, we can do that. But that kind of indicates that we would then need to hold a special meeting to get back in a room to have a conversation with the council about what do we exactly want to do? So.
Christine, I mean, uh, Nicole.
It's me.
Yeah, Corinne, sorry.
So I, I think, um, a, a couple of things. I, I think we should put, not really a deadline, but the applications will be reviewed. The first round of applications. So if you get your application in by like, um, I don't know, the eighteenth of December, that's in a couple of weeks, then we're going to review the first round of applications then. Sorry, it says my internet connection's unstable. And then at least we have a timeframe for when to kind of start reviewing it. And I'm just making up a date. We could make it the end of the year or something like that. So businesses who are ready to apply right now know that, okay, I can get this fairly quickly. So I think that might help them. Um, I also think that like the, the way the state did it with this last, um, granting was just awful and disastrous. They opened up at three. I found out about it when I checked my email at three thirty and I texted a few people. And my four o'clock Jeff Cruz had texted me and said, it's closed. They've already filled them all. So first come, first served is just rotten and it doesn't really help the businesses that need it most. It helps the ones that are either savvy or actually have extra people who are paying attention and, and, um, and helping them out. And those are maybe the businesses that don't need it the most. So um, I think the tier, we really need to do that. And, uh, yeah, we can, I think we should just go ahead with what we've agreed on and whatever happens with the county happens and I think it'll work.
Any, any, any other sort of comments? I, I, I think what we need to do is, is move ahead with what we have. Um, and allow, allow Robert and Christine to, to use their better, best judgment in, in the nuances, if you will. Um, I'm very keen concerned about getting this money out as soon as possible, making it available to people who need it and making it easily available. I don't, you know, and they have, have plenty of time to, to get it done. Obviously first come, first served is going to make an issue of it, but um, if there's some type of tiering in there that we can do, uh, I think that would be good. So.
If I could make a suggestion, Mayor, what I, what I would, um, suggest is changing in the motion, the word from as presented to as discussed. Uh, for the item three dollars, we, we will not make that a first come, first serve. We'll have it, we'll have a window that people can apply. And then we'll take into account the things that the council has discussed when we start allocating those dollars in a way that makes sense. In terms of the expanded loan programs, we're still getting applications in for this funding. We'll continue to do that, but we'll, we'll now offer two different essentially payment plans. And so we'll, we'll move forward with that right away. Uh, we'll also get advertising out about the, the, the software piece. And our, our goal will be to move money as quickly as we can, but do it in a deliberate fashion based on what the conversation that the council just had was.
Does that sound acceptable to people? Okay. So, um, unless there's any other comments, discussion, um, really good conversation about this. I liked the different perspectives. Um, we've given some more framework to it. Um, I think, you know, Robert and Christine can, can move forward with this and the businesses can get the money as soon as possible. Uh, Mary Ann, I see you just unmuted. Do you have a comment or anything?
Nope, I was just ready for the motion.
Go for it.
Okay. I move that the proposed COVID nineteen emergency business assistant program be approved as discussed and authorize a city manager to develop and implement the programs.
A second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? If not, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Steve Clemens?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Corinne Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Good work. Um, I think we've got a program here as, uh, Robert. And Robert pointed out, it's not two hundred and fifty, it's four hundred and thirty thousand. And I think for a small, a town our size to be able to put that kind of money out onto the street and into businesses, um, try to keep them float and keep them, help them survive through this issue, this pandemic. It's, it's, it's saying a lot. Staff comments? Uh, Mike Boquish stepped up quick. So, and he's got a checklist of things that, um, he needs to address here. So go ahead, Mike.
Okay. Now we're going to have this conversation about the, uh, uh, the code amendments, but I, you guys are going to see this in January. So I don't want you to, you know, this is like a spoiler alert. So I want to make sure you still show up in January. Uh, since I've given you the whole story today. But, uh, so, so this, this goes back to House Bill two thousand and one, so the legislature passed that, which deals with affordable housing. And, uh, part of that discussion, uh, or in that house bill is that every city with a population between ten thousand and twenty five thousand are required under this house bill to change their codes to allow for duplexes in every residential zone and everywhere in the city where you also allow single family homes. And so it's not optional. It's regardless of what the impacts are. The state is determined that that's what everybody has to do. And you know, I don't want to, you know, sound, uh, too negative, but in a way I guess we should consider ourselves fortunate that we're not of a, a population of twenty five thousand or greater. Because we would also then be requiring triplexes and fourplexes in those same areas. And so those larger cities, uh, they have a, a larger requirement. And so, uh, so that house bill is implemented through, uh, the Organized Statute. And DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation and Development spent, uh, most of the year writing, uh, a statute that was adopted in September that outlines very strict guidelines or standards of what we have to adopt. And it specifically requires the duplexes. It also requires that we reduce our parking requirements uh, for duplexes. Uh, we currently have a standard that is two parking spaces for a single family and two parking spaces for the duplex. So that's four parking spaces total. The state law says you can't require more parking than what you require for the single family. So they consider a single family and a duplex, the exact same thing for, uh, for their purposes of housing. And so therefore our two parking, uh, spaces for a single family is now one parking space per dwelling unit in a duplex. Each one gets one space. So that's, uh, that's another change you're going to see coming and we have no choice but to adopt it. And so, um, in these code amendments, we have specifically weeded out, you know, all of our nice to have code amendments that folks have been asking for. And we've limited this round of code changes to just what the state has mandated to comply with that law. Uh, so that, uh, we can kind of push it through because we, we have no choice but to adopt it. And so we didn't want to, you know, do like the little Christmas tree bill and plug in a whole bunch of other stuff. And, uh, uh, just to rubber stamp it. But, uh, but anyway, that's, that's what's coming, uh, before you in January. The planning commission is going to see this next Tuesday. And, uh, uh, then we'll, we'll have whatever discussions we have to have, uh, uh, I guess just to educate folks, but in the end we have no choice but to adopt it. If we fail to adopt it, the consequence for the city is, is the state has written a model code that includes all of these standards and then them. And we have until June to adopt our code changes. And if we don't, then our code then becomes moot or void and we're forced to, uh, implement the state's model code in its place. And so one way or another, we, we will be implementing, uh, these standards come June or whenever we get these adopted, uh, whether it's our code or whether it's the state's, uh, model code. But, uh, anyway, it's, I'm not excited about it. I was on a committee that, uh, was allowed to provide some input on it and I expressed a lot of concerns and, and, uh, it still kind of went through this way. Uh, but uh, anyway, that's, that's where we're at. And then for Mary Ann's question about, uh, uh, property value impacts, um, that's really not something that is measurable, but, uh, and it depends also on who you are, because if you're somebody that wants to build a duplex, there's a lot more value, property value in your property for duplex than there is for a single family dwelling. But on the other hand, if you built a really nice, single family custom home and a duplex goes in next door, uh, that could be, uh, an adverse impact for you, especially if they don't provide enough parking. And so, um, I don't know what that looks like. That's a, a county assessor or an appraiser type of question, uh, um, and those are really hard to measure without hiring professionals to go out and do that analysis. So anyway, let's.
So Mike, I just a very quick question because you, you know, um, some developments, um, have covenants that are associated with, um, the houses and the development, uh, and the houses that go in that development. Does this state law and the changes to our code, uh, overwrite those covenants? I mean, for instance, that, that development up above B Street, um, really nice homes, uh, beautiful, you know, nice views. Um, could somebody come into that development and put a, put a duplex in? And.
I, yeah, so I don't know the specific answer to where you can and can't, uh, do the duplex. But I think it's section thirteen of that House Bill two thousand and one has a provision in there for where there's a, they don't use the word covenants, but where they talk about if there's existing restrictions in place that have been lawfully established, which essentially refers to covenants, uh, in a roundabout way. If they were already in effect, I think it was prior to January of two thousand and nineteen, then they remain valid. And so I know, uh, the upper end of the Sunny Hill development, I think it's the Highland, uh, I forget what it is, it's up at the top anyway. They have covenants that prohibit duplexes. I know the Joy Meadows subdivision, the one that's over by Ronded Marbey Park on the backside off May Lane. They have covenants for no duplexes. I don't know about the Ridge subdivision. But anyway, all of those existing covenants are still valid and can be honored. Um, unfortunately, from the city standpoint, it's going to create some conflicts. So hopefully we remember to advise folks where we know these exist because the city has no choice but to approve the duplex. But it puts the homeowners association or whoever's in charge of those covenants to make sure that that duplex doesn't actually get constructed in that development. Now, because the city doesn't have authority to enforce the covenants and deny that request. So it's, it could create some conflicts. And so I'm doing the best I can to try to keep track of those. So I can at least advise folks as, uh, if, if applications come in. Uh, but what that, uh, section thirteen in that house bill also, uh, identifies is it prohibits any new development from establishing covenants that prohibit duplexes from January twenty nineteen and forward. So, um, you know, so a new development would be in violation of the House bill or of state law uh, for establishing covenants and they wouldn't be valid and nobody would have to be able, they couldn't enforce those.
Gary, I thought I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah. I don't want to get too far ahead on this thing. Either. I don't know if it's even worth the discussion, given the state's commitment to democracy, but, uh, maybe some information that, uh, we could have for the, the next, uh, meeting on this. I was curious as to whether we have any idea of what parts of the city could be impacted by this in a practical sense. That is, well, for example, in my neighborhood, it's all built out. There's not any room to build anything else. I, I don't know if maybe they could convert a residence into a duplex. Uh, I don't know if that's allowed either, but that's really a couple of questions that I'd be curious about, uh, at that particular meeting next month.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll see what I could put together. I, I'm not sure what, you know, how, how usable it'll be. I, I might be able to provide you a map that shows you all the residential zones. So you'll know where that can happen. Uh, but as part of that house bill, that includes the allowance for people to, uh, um, convert single family homes into duplexes. And, uh, and so one of the things that I'm struggling with is we have a number of lots that are really small. They could be a four thousand square foot lot that has a really small, single family home on it. Um, under this house bill, somebody theoretically could convert that into a duplex as long as it, you know, maintains those two parking spaces, one for each unit. If, if it's a legal lot. And so, um, there, there's a lot of little things that could be frustrating, but I'm, uh, I'm hoping that because most of our city is built out and they're single family homes, that hopefully folks, uh, it won't be like one of those rampant things where everybody's all of a sudden making a duplex. But.
No, I think, yeah, my dog just came in here and he thinks it's a poor idea too. So.
Is that it, Mike?
Yep, that's all I have for you.
Okay. Kim?
Yep, 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 yep. I do have something.
Okay. Yeah. And well, wait a second. One thing. Is this the last meeting for you?
It is. It is.
Thank you for, for being here and for many, many, many years of service to our, to our community.
Thank you. So.
And don't you have a work session on audit that you have to do before you can leave?
I do, but that, yeah, but that's not a, um, a council meeting. So that's actually the day before the next council meeting that it will be my last day. So thanks for bringing that up, Robert.
Yep.
So, um, I just wanted to say, as you're aware, as, as you're all aware, I'm retiring in January and just wanted to say that it's been a privilege working for the city of La Grande. Um, I've been employed for over thirty five years with the city and have seen, um, and been a part of many, uh, progressive changes with the city. Um, so I just kind of wanted to talk about a couple of the things that many of you may not even know about. Um, so when I began employment, excuse me, with the city, we were still hand reading all the water meters. They would actually write the numbers in a book, bring them into the finance office and we would enter them into a, the computer uh, to calculate out the water bills. Um, it was on an old reel to reel system, uh, of which we finally moved from that, um, into a DOS environment with Springbrook software. Um, and, uh, we're still with Springbrook and, uh, back in the day, Springbrook would actually fly out to La Grande to provide services, updates, changes and whatnot to our software. Uh, that's been a long time ago. Uh, of course, now everything's done online and whatnot. So I can also remember when we had an actual assistant city manager.
Do not give him any ideas.
Yeah. So, uh, Sue Suda was her name. I don't think anyone here would remember her. Um, but anyway, uh, she was the assistant city manager. Um, the parks secretary also worked, uh, half time in the building division, uh, many years. Um, the parks secretary also worked, uh, half time in the building division, uh, many years ago. Um, and, uh, I remember when the elevator was installed at city hall. We acquired the ambulance service. We used to actually do fuel sales at the airport. Um, and we're in charge of that. Um, you know, of course the firehouse being built in the library. Um, and anyway, so, uh, and actually I remember that when I first started with the city, Lynn Hamilton was the city manager. I don't know if you ever, any of you remember that name or not. Um, and, uh, anyway, I take with me a lot of memories, a lot of history of the city of La Grande and, uh, under Robert's leadership and my replacement, um, whom you all know will be Heather. Uh, the city's finance office is in good hands. So it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Kim. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Um, Chief Bell, have you anything for us?
I don't have anything tonight, folks. Thank you though.
That, that's good. We, we like that. Uh, Christine, anything for us?
Sorry, slow on the clicks. And I just want to thank you all for passing that financial assistance package tonight. That is going to make a, a lot of difference for a lot of our businesses and, and I appreciate you doing that. So thank you.
Thank you for putting it together. Um, let's see, Kyle? Whoa, what is this?
I do. I have some news. So, uh.
And you're in your pajama bottoms, right?
No. Uh, in this heavy meeting filled with retirements and business help, I was nominated to bring a breath of fresh air. So, uh, about a year ago, after a strong performance on the state level, we forwarded one of our projects to the national level in the A C E C, which is the, uh, American Council for Engineering Companies. So it's basically like, uh, the group of all the engineering groups in the United States, they come together. They call it the M Es for engineers and they come together in Washington DC and they provide awards for engineering projects that promote safety, ingenuity, all of those types of things. So we pushed forward the, the Beaver Creek project and we were successful. We brought home some hardware. So, uh, out of, uh, over 200 projects that were submitted on a national level, we, uh, were in the top 36. So they don't distinguish that top 36. They just say, uh, you know, you were one of the award winners. And so what does that mean for La Grande? That means that, um, from what we understand, this is the first time that a project in Oregon was recognized on the national level. So we, we've kind of hit a glass ceiling that hadn't been hit in Oregon before. So that's pretty exciting. And it also means that I got to attend my first gala, although it was digital and it was not nearly as much fun as being in person. But, uh, they have a nice, uh, presentation. They had a comedian who went through it. And my favorite line of the whole thing was in Eastern Oregon, we are teaching the fish how to climb mountains. So.
Nice.
Outside of that, great news. And if you do want to see the trophy, I'm a little happy we're not in person because generally when I bring hardware to city hall for council meetings, I leave without it. So we're going to put this one on display down at public works and maybe after this quarantine stuff's over, you all can come in and take a look.
Well, congratulations, Kyle. It's, uh, nice that we broke the ceiling a little bit.
Yeah.
Was there a million dollar award too?
No, they didn't give us any money.
No cash.
I'm thinking that A P might've had to even pay for our trophy, but they didn't tell me.
Nice. Okay. Thanks, Kyle. Um, last, I, I thought he was here, but I, I don't see him now. Stu is gone. Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I guess he didn't have anything. Maybe something came up. Um, city manager comments?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. Thank you. So, uh, we sent out the November monthly report. You should have seen that in your inbox. Uh, I think there's like a hundred and three or a hundred and five entries. We're kind of keeping everybody apprised of what the city's been up to. Later this month, the farmers market board will take a look at the draft agreement that we sent over to them for the USAMAC square. And so we're anticipating that'll come to the council for approval in January, just so that you're aware of that one. Uh, I know that the warming shelter received all of their required, uh, permits and approvals. And I know that was an, an item of interest for the council and that was all I had to say. Thank you.
All right. Um, I'm just going to go in the order from top left to, uh, bottom right. So Gary, any, anything?
Well, yeah, I may have a couple more things than I started out with. Actually, uh, wanted to wish Corinne well and express appreciation for all the good work she's done over the past, uh, four years and most recently with that youth council we've been talking about. So wanted to wish you well, good luck and appreciate the, the work you did for us. And then the other one, of course, is, uh, Kim. I'm glad she just came on. But I've been around long enough to remember some of the people she was talking about. And I remember her predecessor Eldon Slippy, who was here for a long time and made occasional forays into the acting city manager chair. So Kim has certainly come a long way up the ladder herself and done us a, a very good job. So want to, uh, wish her well also. And, uh, I was kind of curious if you're moving to Hawaii. But anyway, good luck and appreciate all the work that everybody has done. So on the, more on the city business front, did have another meeting of the senior council, uh, community connections. I think it was on the 18th of this month. Really not too much to add there, except as I had mentioned to the last meeting, they still have some rental assistance money, possibly could help people with some mortgage assistance. They don't have that fund any longer themselves, but could probably point people in the right direction. So if anybody is interested in those, they need to contact the, uh, the main office. And I don't have the phone number off the top of my head. I'm sorry, but, uh, I'm sure that can be easily located. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is there been any thought with the expiration of the Buxton contract next month? If we want to do some kind of a formal review of that, how it went, what we thought went well, what didn't go well? Where would we take this from here, et cetera, et cetera? Just wanted to throw that out a bit.
We want to, um, we want to put that down perhaps for a, a work session, uh, discussion. I think that's something that's probably more than just a, a five minute comment. So Robert?
Um, I would not be something that I would want to try to add to Christine's plate at present. Uh, thing that's worth having a conversation, um, just kind of a closeout here, here's how everything kind of went. Uh, but I, I would, I would like to push that off into the spring to do something in that regard. I think it's, I think it's helpful to kind of say, here's, here's what we, you know, got for the investment. I just am concerned about with everything else that we're working on right now, adding that in to, to try to do. So.
Anything else, Gary?
No, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, to, to the next person is, would be Corinne, any comments?
I have a few things. Um, first, uh, I was working with former chief Harvey, um, a while ago on the drug takeback, um, because I thought that was a, a good program, but I wanted to see it more in the community. And my employer, Grand Ron Hospital is going to have a drug takeback, uh, kiosk, uh, opening up soon. I didn't get a date. Um, so I'm really happy about that. Um, getting, especially obits off the street is, um, is, uh, going to be really helpful and having, um, another place to drop it off is going to be good. I know a lot of people, um, are hesitant to step inside the police station to do that because it makes them nervous. So. Hospitals make other people nervous, but maybe between the two we'll have, we'll have more opportunities. Um, second is, uh, I believe the airport construction is closed for the, the season. So they've done quite a bit of work and, um, they have stopped because of the season. And I think they're going to start back up when they're able to March-ish. And it's going to be some, some pretty big work next summer and, uh, whoever takes over on the airport commission, I would really, um, encourage them to go to the meetings, the virtual meetings and be sure that, uh, the airport doesn't close for any business type things, because we do have things that ship in and out um, or fly in and out of our airport, um, goods, uh, that we don't want it shut down for our businesses. Um, so, and then the third thing that I heard from my employer again to get today is that we're expecting COVID vaccines, the first round of them in the next couple of weeks. So, um, I'm always like, I'll believe it when I see it. Um, but that's, that's what they're saying. And so, um, it appears that, uh, like nursing home residents will be, um, first priority and, um, frontline healthcare workers, and then they'll go from there. So that's, I just got that today. So I don't know any more details, but it's coming sooner than I thought it would, which is exciting. So, um, and I think that's all I have.
Right.
Oh, I have one more thing. Thank you so much, Kim. Um, you have been so wonderful, um, working with you. Um, especially on the budget, because you just have everything at your finger, fingertips. Uh, we ask you obscure questions and you have the answers and you really make the process, um, much easier. And you're a, a true professional.
Thank you, Corinne.
Enjoy Hawaii.
I'm not going to Hawaii.
Oh, well, you need to.
It's someplace warm.
Um, and I will mention, I will mention that, um, um, Corinne will be with us through all the business, if we have any items next week, uh, uh, next month. Um, and then, um, and then first item of new business is, uh, to swear in the new councilor. So, um, I will see her, I think a bit next month very briefly. So, uh, next over is Mary Ann. Any comments?
Sorry. It just took me a while to find my little microphone. I do. And I too want to thank Kim before she leaves and wish we could have a party for you, but I don't think that's going to happen, Kim. And I would like to thank Corinne too, for her service with us. We, I really appreciate working with you. And I did attend the November 17th, um, annual meeting for Northeast Oregon Housing. And just, um, give you this, a quick little update. One was they have a hundred percent occupancy on all of their units, which is really one of the first times they've had it. And they've had very little problems with anybody paying their rent, whatever they needed to pay. So I think that's very, that's very good. And then I'm sure you saw it in the paper, the Monday paper about Timber Ridge and the hundred and four units. And so that's going to be starting in, in April to be built. And I think that's going to help our homeless issue because we have those 36 one bedroom, 32 two bedroom and 32 three or four bedroom. So I think that's.
Mary Ann, where, where are they going to build that?
It's over on East Q between 26th and 27th.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I think that they've, I think the ground is probably been, I think they've already had the breaking of the ground, but they haven't done anything else. And then I did want to just remind everybody what, what Main Street is doing. We didn't have the parade, as you probably all know. And we've had a little bit of people complaining about that, but due to COVID, we just decided we couldn't do that. And because we had to have to get contact information for everybody who was attending the parade, not just the participants, but everybody. And that was almost, um, we couldn't even think about that. So what we're doing instead is our first annual, which I believe I've sent to everybody, our first annual, uh, caravan to look at the lights, which will be done on, on December 19th. And we have four different routes we're going on. Well, two of them are the same. Two of them are going to be in Island City and La Grande and the residential areas. And then we have one, they will all go through La Grande and Island City and through our residential. But one group will then veer off and go to Union and one will roll off to Elgin. And it's up to people who, which one they want to take. And then, um, we will, when they come into Buy Mart, because that's where our staging area will be. We'll have a food drive going on. We'll have a toy drive going on and is that, oh, I think that was only those two drives going on. And then, oh, we'll have a letter, a box to put letters through Santa. And KLBM will start reading them on Monday and then mail them off to Santa. And we'll have at, at the, the staging area, we'll have a contest for the best decorated cars. And we will also encourage people to wear their ugly Christmas sweater. So if any of you have an ugly Christmas sweater, come down and show it off to everybody, well, through your car window. And if you have kids, you can have them come in their Christmas jammies because we want to make them comfortable. And that's, we, we were hoping this is going to be our first annual. Hopefully next year we'll have the parade back. But we will still have this, this drive. We're going to start that every year. So that's about, I think, all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann. Nicole?
Uh, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
What? Uh, nice hat. Nice hat, Robert. Uh, Justin, do you have anything?
No, I'm good for this evening. Thank you.
All right. Um, I have a few things. I'll go through them pretty quickly. Uh, a big thank you to Kim. Um, she's been around for a while. It, it took me a bit to catch up to her, but pretty quick. I, I, I heard things that I remember passing, um, building the library, building the fire station, um, changing over Springbook, Brook. Um, I can think of, I, I worked with Eldon more than once as the, uh, assistant ma- city manager or the acting city manager. Um, but Kim, you've been a, a stalwart person here and you, as, as Corinne said, you've been a professional and we've really appreciated you at, uh, budget hearings and keeping us all in line. So thank you and, and enjoy Hawaii. Had to say it. Um, the other thank you is to Corinne. Um, four years goes really quickly. And when you sign up to run for city council, you think, oh, that's not very, you know, that, that, that's a long time for years. But, um, it does go very quickly and you've been a real asset to the council the whole time. Uh, in, you know, e- even as things are starting to, to wind down for you, um, we're still getting emails and, uh, and you're still participating and that's, that's a sign of a, a committed, uh, public servant. So thank you. Um, I'll miss having you around, but I know where you live. And, um, then the last thing I have is, um, uh, a, a, a lot was made during the election about, uh, our snow plowing policy. Uh, and not too long ago, the observer called me out on, on, uh, on, on doing something about this. So I'm bringing it up as, you know, for the council to, to consider. Um, should we ask public works to look at our policy, which is 11, 12 years old? Um, is it time to have it pulled out and revised, uh, maybe rethink when, uh, plowing starts? Or, uh, should be prioritized certain parts of the city when, um, when the snow hits? It does seem to me that in, in areas that have steep roads and have access like C um, and up by the hospital, some of those places could get a tad more snow and they could be, the road conditions could be a little, a little more difficult to deal with. Um, but I'm pretty, I don't know how, uh, this, the section eight is, uh, the segmenting the city the way it is, whether those types of things are taken into consideration when, when the plows go out or when sand happens. So, um, you know, this is a consensus thing. Does, does the council think this needs to, to be reviewed or looked at? So, um, Robert, is this, is it appropriate to, 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 to have this kind of a consensus thing now? Or, um, or do we need to bring it back as an action item?
Well, I think, I think a couple of things. Um, I think asking Kyle just to talk for a couple of minutes about the plan. I'm not sure how many of our council has recently read the plan that, that talks about what the decision matrix is regarding what gets plowed first and why. Uh, maybe, maybe Kyle could give a really quick overview. Somebody messaged me something about warm cookies coming out of an oven, uh, not to point anybody out, but, uh, we'll, we'll let Kyle do that. And I think that, um, it might be some. It might be something that could be a suggested topic for the retreat. I don't know that revising, I don't know that, that attempting to revise the plan or, or evaluate or assess the plan. In time to do something in conjunction with the current year. Uh. Will be practical if. The intent is to significantly increase. The frequency of plowing because that has budget implications and we did not budget for that sort of a concept. So. It's, it's not as simple as saying, hey, let's plow when there's two inches of snow on the ground. As, as we're all very well aware. Um, so let me let Kyle just talk for a couple of minutes and then we'll kinda see where the conversation goes from there.
All right. So, uh, just to touch on a couple of your comments, some of those are already being taken into consideration on. Our internal decision matrix when we're looking at how and where and when we're going to plow. So. Um, going through the election season and reading a lot of the, uh, information that was coming out, I think there's a lot of misconceptions on. On how this decision-making goes about. Uh, one of my favorites is that we actually measured the snow depth out near the airport, which is not true. We do not actually have a designated snow measurement spot. It's, it's more of, uh, when we see those winter storms coming in. You need to take into consideration, one, the existing conditions on the ground. If there's already four inches on the ground, what's that storm going to bring in? If the ground is bare, you also have to consider oncoming conditions. Are we gonna get four inches or eighteen inches of snow and it's gonna rain tomorrow and gonna be gone in a day? Cause that happened to us last year. And so, uh, you know. The, the primary response when we get, uh, any sort of a storm is sanding immediately. We, we sand starting usually around three AM. We'll start with the hills, the arterials, the four-way stops. Uh, we, you know. Our, our whole crew's been around, most of the people for twenty-plus years. They know where the bad spots are. And they hit them with that gravel right off the bat. Uh, one of the things we implemented last year and the year before is, uh, what we termed a practice plow. So. Uh, many times when we saw conditions that didn't really fall into the order of, uh, an all-out city plow, but we saw that they were going to bring on conditions that were gonna be troublesome quickly. Maybe we got, uh, a fair amount of snow, but, uh, freezing conditions were moving in and we knew that was gonna build up into ice. We will, uh, send out the crews during the daytime. We're not gonna call people in on overtime, but. We'll break away crews to go and clear arterials, collectors. Um, a lot of what people don't realize is that with just clearing arterials and collectors, there is no spot in the city of La Grande where you're not three blocks from a cleared road. So even in those areas where we can get out and get that done during a day or two, it's a, a drastic improvement over just leaving it be. So. Um, there's a lot that goes into those decisions. When you look at the current plan, I think when they developed it, they left a lot of flexibility in there because they didn't wanna come into that. Uh, if it snows two inches, we're going to plow. The implications of, of plowing two inches with the equipment that we utilize are, are pretty high considering, uh, wear-on equipment. Uh. The ability of our equipment to remove that low layer of snow. I'm. A lot of people point to, uh, the people who are plowing the interstate and say, hey, you know, they set their plows a half inch above grade. Uh, on the interstate, you are not dealing with manholes, curbs, parked cars, mailboxes, um. Rocks. We have a lot of people who enjoy putting landscaping rocks right out into the right of way. So, um, our plow drivers do. Don't get to use that small margin of error. We generally have probably between three-quarters and an inch. Below some of our truck plows, just so that we're not injuring drivers and causing damage to our infrastructure. So if you're plowing at two inches, I'm gonna skim off the top inch and we're not gonna really improve conditions. So, uh. When we look at the current plan, I, I think there's places we can look at. And I think, uh, the EOU class who took a look at our plan last year made one great suggestion, and that was trying to get. The communication out to the community of where we're gonna be, when we're gonna be there. And, uh, looking really at that piece. So I think looking at the policy, there's good bones. We can refine it some more. Uh, we'll keep looking at it and trying to come up with some ju, some suggestions, but I am definitely not against if, uh, you guys have, uh. Different suggestions that you wanna take a look at the implications. If we change things, um, we're more than happy to take a look at those.
That's good information, Kyle. Uh, uh, it would be kind of neat to get FAQs out to the paper or something. Focusing on persons you've brought up with the answers, cause a lot of people don't know this stuff.
Yes. And I, I think that was evident last, last fall during the, during the election. Um, I, I, I would never advocate plowing when it was only two inches deep. Um, you know, i- i- it, just normal traffic pounds it down enough that it's gone by nine o'clock if it's, that's all we've had overnight. Um. So it's just good to know. That. Public Works recognizes the complexity of this situation. And they're not just having a blanket policy. They have, they have a policy in place that's flexible to handle. Uh, the conditions that arise and that will continue to, to change over time. So. Um, that works for me if we wanna, I may bring it up as a, as a retreat i- item, but. Um, at this point, I think we've got enough, uh, I think Gary's idea is right. If you've got some. FAQs that you can get out to the newspaper, that might help them, um, and develop a story over the next, uh, few weeks to kinda get people ready.
We can do that. No problem.
Okay. Um, that's, that's all I have. Um, and, um, I think, uh, the next time we see each other will be after Christmas. So I wish you all a safe and merry holidays. Um. Take care of yourselves. And, uh, with that, I'll adjourn our meeting for the evening. Good night.
Sure. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.